There we go. All right. All council members are present and seated. Good evening and welcome to April 11th, 2022 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross. Tonight's City Council Meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. And welcome to all, and thank you for joining us. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ross. Here. Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen. I know for the record that she doesn't intend to be here tonight, so. Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
I believe Councilmember Johnson is also absent this evening. Councilmember Lissa.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Councilmembers Christensen and Johnson have requested an excused absence from tonight's meeting. Is there a motion excusing Councilmembers Christensen and Johnson?
So moved. Duck it.
So there's a motion by Mayor Procham Mayhew and seconded by Councilmember Holloway to accuse Councilmembers Christensen and Johnson in discussion. Seeing none, those all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes and Councilmembers John, Christian, Johnson are absent, excuse. As a reminder, tonight, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. So we will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. We wait for the flag. Council, please turn on your microphones. Councilwoman Watson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Now move to our first item of regular business, which is to approve the agenda. Council, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? To approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The agenda has been approved. Motion by Councilwoman Mayhew and seconded by Councilwoman Lissa. Any discussion? Councilwoman Lissa.
Yes, move to add an agenda item to the committee of the whole to discuss the 2020-2022 Railroad Days.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Councilwoman Lissa, seconded by Mayor Procham Mayhew. Any discussion? I think seeing none. You will go ahead and vote on this motion and will confirm it. Or Holloway, did you have a comment regarding this?
No, I have another motion.
Okay. Let's vote on this motion, all in favor, adding Railroad Days to the committee of the whole. Say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, Councilmember Holloway.
Like to move warrants down into F and A.
Okay, if you're moving them, they just immediately follow the consent agenda.
Understood.
Okay, so for a second.
For a matter, second is not required for adjustment to the consent agenda.
Oh. All right, so moving.
I'm seconding it anyway.
All right. Warrants down to after following consent agenda. Okay, all is approved of the agenda with moving the warrants. Councilwoman Mayhew.
Sorry, I'm confused. Were you calling a vote?
Well, we're going to approve the overall agenda.
Yeah, move to add an item under special business entitled Potential Closed Session to Discuss Rails Hobenga Project.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Procham and seconded by Councilwoman Lissa. Should we add potential closed session for the Rails Hobenga project?
Point of order. Councilman, are you asking for a closed session or you want to have a discussion about the potential of a closed session?
The latter.
Thank you.
All in favor of adding a potential closed session? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. Councilwoman Mayhew.
Move to remove from section five, the word recommendation.
I'm applying, where?
An item five warrants on the agenda in that item five, there is a word recommendation. Moving to remove that as I don't believe there was a recommendation from F and A for this.
Okay. Is it a recommended action?
It's just action.
Okay, generally, I think you recommended action can also be from staff. So you want to remove it to just action?
I would like to so that the council is aware that there was no recommendation from the F and A committee.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All, so actually. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, so the overall agenda, should we approve that now with the change? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, it is unanimous. So we are moving on to first item of the business this evening. Is the agenda bill point two dash zero seven? Rails Hobenga Development Appeal Hearing, Part Three. So at its, it's March 14th, 2022, regular meetings. City Council heard the Rails Hobenga Development Appeal. After meeting closed session, City Council moved to postpone the decision to the March 28th, 2022 meeting and requested that staff provide the council with recordings and a transcript of the Historic Review Board proceeding. At the March 22nd, 28th, 22 regular meetings, the council met in closed session to deliberate further. City Council went into open session and made a motion to affirm the decision of the Historic Design Review Board for the Rails Hobenga Project. Requested the city attorney prepare a resolution to that effect for adoption at the April 11th, 2022 regular City Council meeting. Councilor Zara motion. Mayor Procham Mayhew.
Move to approve Resolution Number 1613, affirming the decision of the Historic Design Review Board for the Rails Hobenga Project.
Second. Moved by Mayor Procham Mayhew and seconded by Councilwoman Holloway. All right, is there any discussion? So we added a potential for a closed session. That Councilwoman Lissa.
You're muted, sir.
Hate it when that happens. This is maybe the time when the mayor Procham can explain why there might be a potential closed session or have discussion around that.
Mayor Procham Mayhew.
Yeah, it was just simply on advice of the city attorney that in the event that we had wanted to have such a closed session, it would have been advisable to have that on the agenda. So there was no reason to put it on the agenda other than to allow us to do so if any of us so wished.
So is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Yeah, and is there any need for the potential closed session? Councilmember Vincent.
Well, we met on this, of course, in the quasi judicial settings and I explored it pretty carefully. Is, is there anything new that we need to go over or any, anything like that? It felt like we covered it pretty well and the parties associated with it are entitled to action being taken, so we're moving forward, right?
Nothing new is the, the resolution affirming council's decision from March 28th. All right. So any further discussion? So we're ready to vote. All those approve, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have four ayes and Councilwoman Lissa saying nay. So motion passes four to one for the Resolution Number 1613 and approved. Right? Thank you, so moving on. Next item of business is proclamations. So we have two this evening and first up is Genville 22 dash zero four four Sexual Assault Awareness Month. April 2022 marks the sixth year that some cities and counties have participated with cities across King County in sexual assault awareness fund as part of a national and regional effort to help educate our communities about ways we can all better recognize, respond to, and help in sexual violence. The National Sexual Violence Resource Center's theme is building safe online spaces together. This year, local advocates will focus on steps to build safe online spaces for everyone. So whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime and 29% of the super survivors who were supported by community sexual assault organizations statewide identified as Black, Indigenous, and people of color in 2019. Of those identified ethnicity, 21% identified as Latinx or Hispanic and rape, whereas rape is among the most underreported crime for reasons including victim's fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within the legal system. Additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism, further oppressed and silenced victims. And whereas individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in the compounded by racism, sexism, hetero-sexism, and others formed of oppression. Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ plus, elders, people with disabilities, and other people targeted by oppression are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in complex ways. And whereas sexual violence exists on a continuum of behavior and includes racist, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, ableist, or other hate speech. This ranges from rape jokes to verbal harassment to threat of rape and assault. Harassing comments and behaviors that take place online can and do traumatize victims and the impact should not be minimized. And rest 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online. And people from historically oppressed groups are more likely to experience online harassment, nearing inequities we see somewhere else elsewhere in society. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work for school. And whereas working together as community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore, Captain Ross, Mayor of the city, some counties do hereby join advocates and communities throughout King County and taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors claiming April as sexual assault awareness. Our next proclamation is a Genville 22 dash zero sixty Arbor Day. National Arbor Day is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the tree planters holiday. When Julius Morton, with Nebraska's board back of culture, posed a day to plant and appreciate trees. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed 150 years ago with the planting of more than 3 million trees in Nebraska in 1872. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precious hot soil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas the city promotes planting of trees on public and private lands, reforestation of open spaces, and other tree protection enhancements that help sustain the natural character of the surrounding landscape. And whereas trees, while shapes and sizes reduce the erosion of our precious hot soil, reduce flooding, cut home heating and cooling costs, clean the air, combat climate change, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the presence of trees in our city directly improve human health and well-being. Now therefore, I, Captain Ross, Mayor of the city, as a county, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 22 as Arbor Day. And I believe our urban forester, Phil Bennett, has joined us today. He can present and speak to this proclamation. Did I see Mr. Bennett online?
Mayor, I don't see Phil online and he is, he is taking care of his own child at the moment. His wife is on a trip. So if it's okay, I will accept this. I know that we're going to have quite the event out at Centennial Park. I think we have a tree reserved just for you. Phil and Jason and the volunteers have put a lot of effort into prepping for the event. So we really do encourage a lot of folks to come out and join us and take place, take part in the, in the tree planting that we're going to have out there. We're going to be trying to planting several trees in preparation of unfortunately having to remove and relocate some of the trees as a result of our playground project. We're, we're, we're gonna take some out or we're going to replace them over a couple Arbor Days here. So thank you very much for the proclamation. I'll make sure Phil gets it.
Thank you very much. Our press public works director, Mike Chalmers. Thank you, Director Chalmers, and I'm looking forward to the event. We made a great event in a couple of weeks on a Sunday, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Then at this time, we provide time for residents to comment on items on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Some residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient orderly manner. But therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. And please make to be recognized and state your name and city of residence for the record. Record comments to council or the whole, not to individual members. Please know that this is not the time to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff engaging debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And last, please respect the forum of these proceedings as all due respect would be afforded you. So with that, would you like to speak on any concern that is not on the agenda this evening? So we'll look for anyone that raised their hands. See someone calling in. Do we have instructions on how a person that they called on my phone would be able to comment?
Yes, Mayor, let me pull those off the website. Phone caller, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six will lower your hand.
Okay. So pressing star nine, raise your hand if you're, if you have any comments for this evening. Right. Right. If we will move on, I do not see anyone else raising their hand. So now you move on to the consent agenda. For what's considered agenda for the March 15th, 2022, City Council Special Meeting Minutes. Approval of the March 25th and 26th, 2022 City Council Retreat Meeting Minutes. Who of the March 28th, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Much of the claims that will come later and then approval of AB 22 dash zero four nine, Resolution Number 1611, protecting tech attack for AM services for the one edition water main replacement project. So councilors, there are motions to approve.
Moved.
Your second. There is a move by Mayor Procham Mayhew and seconded by Councilwoman Holloway. There any public comment on the site? Please understand that the comments must be related to the topic on the consent agenda. And let me hear your comments in two minutes. Now let's see if there's any raised hand. You know, I'm not seeing it. Okay, councilors, is there any discussion regarding this? Seeing none. Move on to votes. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. And items removed from the consent agenda shall be added to the meeting agenda order of business immediately following decision. Approval of the claims report dated April 5th. And is there a Councilwoman Mayhew would like to make a motion?
Move to approve the claims report as presented.
There's a second.
Second.
So motion by Mayor Procham Mayhew and seconded by Councilwoman Lissa. Any discussion? Councilwoman Holloway.
Okay, all right. Report actually contains four separate warrant reports dated 317, 325, 330, which is payroll, and 331. The latter three reports are much improved. I thank staff for that. Much improved from prior and have meaningful descriptions on items allowing F and A members to go ahead and look through those and ratify those. And we said that the 317 report is deficient in content, particularly in the lower level descriptions of some items. There are some 30 items which are blank and some which have just listed who made the purchase, not what the purpose of the purchase was for. So I find that report to be deficient. In the past, the F and A committee, when we met together pre-COVID, actually had the invoice packages wheeled in, literally wheeled in, and we could go back and review them and to answer any of those questions. But that is kind of not an option during COVID and probably shouldn't be. It was somewhat onerous to go through that and had some sense of information that did escape. Okay, having said that, we've had several meetings discuss about internal process controls. I'm sufficiently happy with those that, at least for this one report, I will rely on those process controls to validate if expenses are appropriate. I will be voting yes, but I could not do it given the deficient report out of consent.
Mayor Procham Mayhew.
Yeah, I share Councilmember Holloway's perspective as he laid it out, I thought, very well. The, the thing that, that council member should remember, and Councilmember Holloway pointed this out, is that there's a whole set of internal controls that happen. And those controls have, are surround the actual invoices and claims that come in. And there's a whole approval process that happens. Various people have to sign off and approve and code and approve the coding and so forth of those. All of that happens by people who have access to the actual invoice and related documents. So, so there's a strong process there. Our role as council members is outside of that role. We have a separate role in which we must review and approve the warrants. And so the, the challenge here is that the particular report that we're given, as Councilmember Holloway pointed out, it doesn't have all the information that's in those packets. And the, the issue for all of us is that on council is that unless we're going to go look at those supporting packets, you know, it's hard for us to, to know what some of those items are. On F and A committee, when we have individual questions, hey, what's this item? We ask and staff supports us to give us the answers, the further detail. So, so there's a whole process here, but our view at F and A is really this report. And here's the important thing to understand, this report is used by all of us. Is actually not used by staff in the performance of their internal controls. They, they're actually looking at invoices and details, other documents. But this is the document that we see in performing our role. So it's, we think very important that this report have sufficient information to allow all of us to discharge our particular duties, not just, sorry, without having to go and follow and, and ask for additional information from staff. So I share Councilmember Holloway's concern. I know that staff does, as he pointed out, several reports, the more recent ones are much improved. They're continuing to work to improve those and work together with the F and A committee to outline exactly what information should be in these fields to help us do our job. By the way, the reports that we see are the ones that the public can see.
Right.
So we think this is very important. I completely agree with Councilmember Holloway and I believe staff does as well that this improvement needs to be made. So I also am satisfied that, that I can approve this. Any questions I had about specific items have been answered. I'm ready to vote yes to approve this, but I'm in support of Councilmember Holloway raising this concern and the importance of us getting some, some improvements from staff on this.
I think some of the comments from staff was that they are working with individual departments because they do review the invoices and so that they would be putting in what the, what the line item is, what the description is for each of those. And also with the implementation of ERP system that they're currently working on, you will have much better reporting through that whole process. But as you stated, the internal controls are there and you have sign off by all the different directors. And so, so you know, all the rules will be enforced. Councilmember Vincent.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I appreciate the veteran councilman articulating this because I've, I've gone through that report and it's like a thousand pages. And it's, it's really hard to figure out if you don't know what you're looking at, which I don't. But a lot of times when I'm looking at those lines, I can't tell what the money is being spent on. And, and it does feel kind of like. And, and it does feel kind of like, well, I guess it feels like, it feels like I'm just trusting that the staff is doing their job, which I really do. But I, I also feel like as a council member, I'm, I'm not, I'm not supposed to place my, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to be holding people accountable. I'm not just trusting that they're doing their jobs, which I absolutely do trust that they're doing their jobs. And, you know, I, but I appreciate you articulating. What I couldn't articulate is that I don't know what the heck this money is being spent on some of the time. So, you know, I, I would love to have a report that's easier to read and know, okay, this money's being spent by this department on, on, on this item. Or, you know, and, and another thing that, that I've heard several council members articulate in the past is the idea that we have an idea that we're on track budget wise. That, that, you know, that the budget that this is coming out of is, you know, at this point in the year, still got two thirds left of the budget roundabout. And, you know, it's some kind of, and that might be too deep for, for the consent agenda, which I, I totally get. But it, but it would be nice to know where, where the money's going.
That's for Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments and I completely agree with them. I, I would further share that one of the discussion items with staff has been, has been whether the report needs to be as long as it is. As you've all noticed, there is a lot of repetition in there. And so we're looking at, hey, exactly what amount of that report is really what we need to do to do our job. So that's part of the ongoing discussion as well. So we, there, there really is a commitment to trying to make that a useful report. As brief as, as it can be, but still allowing us to do our job. So we're working together with them. The other thing I just wanted to reemphasize to council members is remember that any questions you have about any item on the, on that report, that report goes out with the F and A agenda, the committee agenda. You're welcome to review that and send questions on any item you have to staff, but please co- copy the, at least me as the F and A committee chair, if not the whole F and A committee. And we will follow up on those items and report back to you or ensure that there's a report back to you. So, and by the way, if, if you have questions after the F and A committee, still, please send those through the same way. There is a commitment both by staff and by the F and A committee members to ensuring that any council member questions on any particular claim are answered.
All right, any more discussion? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor approving the claims report, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, motion passed unanimously and the claims report is approved. Moving on to reports, they cite them on the agenda or committee reports. So there, are there any reports for Public Safety Committee? You know that our chair is not here this evening.
We did not meet, so no.
Right.
No report, but we do have an item down in the committee as a whole that is a community development item.
Okay. Parks and Public Works, next committee report is from Parks and Public Works Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero five six. Resolution number sixteen ten, like the Nord, Nordbin Company LLC for construction of the twenty-two sidewalk repair and replacing project. Councilor Halli, would you please read the summary and motion?
All right, I'll read part of the summary. Several panels around the city as you call me are acting as potential trip hazards and must be repaired or completely replaced. As street trees have matured, their roots are causing sidewalks to fail. The new sidewalk panels will have mitigation measures in place that allow for roots to continue to grow with less impact on the sidewalks. Then twenty twenty-two sidewalk repair replacement project was advertised to contractors for bid on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Total four bids were received. The low bid came from Norvig Company LLC for five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and hundred and five and sixty-four cents, including tax, which is below the engineer's estimate of seven hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Staff recommend awarding the twenty twenty-two sidewalk repair replacement to COVID. Or sorry, Norvin Company LLC and authorize the mayor to sign. Like a motion, move to adopt resolution sixteen ten, awarding a public works contract to a Nordvin Company LLC for the twenty twenty-two sidewalk repair replacement project and authorize the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Hallway and second by customer Vincent. Councilor Hallway, did you want to make some comments?
Yeah, and if possible, can we at least bring up one of the two maps, just for people who may be watching, I assume later on YouTube. We've got several panels across the city. We'll be doing a mixture of replacement where required and some grinding to level it out where we can extend the life of the existing sidewalk. But as you can see, you might look at your favorite neighborhood and make note of where those events are occurring. We're doing a little catch up here. COVID put us a little off track on doing this. We're back on track and getting these sidewalks back into shape.
Thank you. I think we'll go to public comment on this item is that a sand for the comment must be related to this agenda bill. Is there any public comment? Would be two minutes. No, not seen anyone raise their hand? All right. For discussion, Councilor Vincent?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things that were important to me when we were going over this. The, the fellow presenting it, and I'm terrible with names, I apologize. I did a really good job of presenting it, but a grind apparently is about ten percent the cost of a replacement. So there are a lot of, if you look on this particular map on the, on the screen right here, there are a lot of places where they're going to grind the sidewalks down so that there's not that tripping hazard. And they did also talk, talk about how any, any place where they're replacing it, they're going to be doing those mitigations for tree roots. And I forget, we're, and maybe council member Holloway can refresh my memory. If we have anything in place for any future on development to make sure that those mitigations are put in place in the beginning and that trees are planted properly so that this kind of stuff doesn't have to happen again in the future. He also talked about ongoing fixes as this is going to necessarily continue. Year after year, there will be an expense, but that that expense is not expected to be nearly so high because we are behind as council member Holloway pointed out, we're, we're behind on this several years.
Chair, may I respond?
Yes, Councilor Halli.
In regards to, you'll see a lot of the dots are in what was called Snoqualmie Ridge one. We had development standards which really didn't give the trees deep enough dirt to go into. For those in that area who have dug in their yards, it's practically concrete. So standards were changed for Snoqualmie Ridge two, and I assume those standards are carried forward any further development to make sure that the trees have enough real dirt underneath them that they can actually go down versus to go sideways and try to find nutrients soil. So hopefully that will reduce sidewalk repair requires in future developments. But it won't eliminate. We still do some of this downtown. Tree will do what a tree decides to do, even in the nice soil that is the downtown. That's it for me.
Right. No comments, seeing none. She moved her votes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Right, motion passes approving the agenda bill twenty-two dash zero five six. Refer to Mayhew.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have made this comment during the debate. I, I just wanted to say, mayor, if, if, if it seems to me this might be something that our, our public information folks might want to push out to the community. It seems like this will be of tremendous interest to many in our community. We can see just from the map there of, of the grinds, how many neighborhoods are, are going to receive some relief. And so letting them know this is coming is, I think, something is news that will be welcome to them. So maybe consider whether that might be something to sort of put out press release and so forth. Yeah.
I agree. This would be great news for many neighborhoods. So, good idea. Thank you. All right. Next committee report is Finance Administration. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero four eight, like the bargaining agreement between Snoqualmie Police Association and the city of Snoqualmie. Your approach and Mayhew, would you please read the summary and motion?
City of Snoqualmie recently completed negotiations with the Snoqualmie Police Association, SPA. The proposed collective bargaining agreement, if approved by council, will last through the end of twenty twenty-three with specific, with specific articles applying retroactively to January first, twenty twenty-two. Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Snoqualmie Police Association and the city of Snoqualmie and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Second.
The motion by Mayor Proton Mayhew. Yeah, I saw a race. I think it was customer and Watten. Second by customer Watten. Okay, any public comment regarding this? Seeing none? Councilors, there any, any discussion? Mayor Proton Mayhew?
And mayor, I just want to thank you and, and staff. I, I know that, and I'd like to thank the police officers union. I know that negotiating these contracts these days is tough for, for many unions, but in particular, police officers unions across the state. And I think driving to an agreement here, I know took a lot of hard work and I just want to thank all involved for doing that.
Thank you. I think they both negotiated in good faith. Appreciate all the hard work. Any other comments? Okay, we're done for, to, for votes. All those approve the contracts, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Right, and now she passes and the approval of the Snoqualmie Police Association agreement. Thank you. Next item is Finance Administration Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero five two, hybrid meeting discussion. Your approach and Mayhew would like to read the summary?
Yes, the we've been having discussions council with administration and at our request, administration has been planning for the implementation of hybrid council, council committee and commission meetings. As a result of that work that they've been doing so far at our request, they have reached a point now where they're requesting input from council regarding expectations on a number of specific areas regarding the format of future public meetings. Mayor, that's the introduction. I have some other comments, but I can wait if now is not the time.
Well, there's a, you know, next steps questionnaire on, on that page that they're showing. If you have some comments, please go ahead.
Yeah, so council members, I think my own point of view is that trying to go over all of these items in a meeting here is probably not the best use of all of our time. But what is very important is that we give guidance to staff so that they can bring us a specific proposal. So it's my belief that what we should do, and it's my request, that each of us review the information that staff has provided to us in this agenda bill and then provide feedback. It's my intention to contact each of you and ensure that your feedback that you would give to staff gets to them. And then they can receive our various feedback, use that to sort of put together a proposal they think would meet our guidance. And and then their goal is to come back to us soon with a, a specific proposal and any, anything else they need from us to support that proposal so that we can, you know, make a decision. So it's my point of view, if each of us could, that, that we should do that, we should each review this information, provide input. And as I mentioned, it's my intention to contact each of you and ensure that you are able to provide input and help enable you to do that over the next week or so.
Other council members, so, I mean, it looks like there's four questions. Basically, it's, do you, do you want to go with that format or do you want to have a discussion? Councilor Watten?
One of the concerns is if we meet in person to have a delayed start time, I think there was mostly consensus around that of starting at seven PM to allow those working outside the valley time to get home. And I, I think the other one is that we may be able to decide tonight, and that's, do we try to encourage meeting in person over Zoom? And, and should that just be council or should that be committee meetings as well?
Councilor Say?
Yeah, I think you know, this is, it's a difficult thing to, to come up with a solution because, you know, we all have different scenarios and with the, a lot of companies and, and others returning to work. It, you know, it's almost like I feel like you either have to jump in the pool or, or we got to continue to, to maintain status quo. And I, I know what my opinion is, but I, I certainly don't want to, to you know, push, push someone into doing something they're not comfortable with. At the same time, I have, I keep all, all of the, you know, staff and council and mayor and, and community members that want to attend council meetings, you know, one of their health and safety is still my number one priority. And I don't, I don't, while I, I think getting back in person um can, can help some things. We've done a fairly good job of doing this remotely as well. So I've been a hybrid version. I, I'm struggling to understand how a hybrid version might work. And I do appreciate the, the feedback from other, other jurisdictions that was provided at the same time. So I don't have an answer on, on these questions. I need to, I need to think through them more because a couple of them are easy ones and a couple of them are, are not so easy. So. This for me.
Councilor Vincent?
Uh, yeah, my, my feeling is, I, I hear where Councilman Lusay is coming from. I think that we should be encouraging in-person meetings across the board and making, making allowances for people who, who need to or feel most more comfortable attending remotely. But I think we do need to get back to meeting in person. There's, there's a lot lost through the screen that I think is important to, to get that in. And I, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to meet in person with, with remote possibilities. The staff has talked about scenarios where people are, are zooming in to an in-person meeting. And that doesn't seem out of the scope of reason.
Councilor Say?
All right, I just wanted to add one more item. I, I do. I would do want to bring up that when we, when we went to remote, we, we changed the start time for council and committee meetings, primarily council meetings to be at six o'clock. changed the start time for council and committee meetings, primarily council meetings to be at six o'clock. And then it was discussed that if there were special meetings, council meetings would be moved to seven. So that's committee so that that so no, no council meetings would happen before six P M. I think I unfortunately had to express today that there was just there was just no way with my work obligations to get to be able to participate at a five P M. Meeting. So I do want to encourage the mayor and council members to let's try to stick to that as much as we possibly can.
Do the seven seven P M. In person?
Yeah. So if there's a if there's a special meeting or a round table or or some sort of workshop or presentation that we don't start any of those earlier than six. And we just start the council meeting at seven as it normally was in the past. I think that seems to be doable for everyone. Obviously, if we go to, I think that's that's very similar to what we had anyway when we were in all in person pre COVID. If we if remember way back in the past, in this other world that we used to live in, that was very much the case that we would start it at six o'clock for any special meetings. So.
Thank you. Mayor, can you?
Yeah. So on this point, actually, I'll just apologize. We should have caught this at the F and A committee, but our existing rules of procedure, our council rules of procedure as they currently stand require in-person meetings to start at seven o'clock. And also that roundtable meetings, you know, would start at six and then the council meeting pushed back. This meeting that was originally scheduled for earlier today was a special council meeting, which is a different animal. And so I think that kind of slipped through. But I I think I think we're all aware of the difficulty of a five o'clock meeting and the fact that in fact, we we weren't able to pull it off, just just highlights that. So I honestly, I don't think that'll be a problem going forward. But I still think that there's a thought here to be given about, fine, that's what our current procedure provides. But how do we want to do this going forward? There's still some room for there. I don't think there's going to be a lot of disagreement amongst the council that the meeting should start at seven. In in any event where there are people showing up live. But then we need to think about some of the, you know, how will that work for committee meetings? We generally start before seven, things like that. So I still think there's a fair amount to kind of work through. And so I think that's where I think if we each take a little time to think through as I meet with each of you, I'll sort of try and prompt you towards the different sort of nuances in here that, you know, maybe you can form a view on. And I know that hopefully, I'm not out of line just to to say this. I know the mayor would be happy to discuss with you in more depth, any concerns you have or thoughts. And I know that staff is willing is ready to kind of answer questions, give you more detail and that kind of thing. So I I really think if each one of us applies our thoughts to this and really kind of thinks it through, I think the set of kind of guidance that we'll come up with, I think will be fantastic. And I think I think the staff will then be able to kind of put that together for us and get a sense of of what we want and bring us a really good proposal. So I just think that probably, you know, fifteen minutes or half an hour now is is not the the best approach. I think each of us really kind of committing for next week or so to really think this through and then provide guidance, I think will will come up to something really strong.
Thank you. Should we then add this to the F and A agenda for what you're what the solutions are based on input from customers to you? Your first to me, you?
Yeah, move to refer this back to F and A committee and request that they come forward at our next meeting with a a proposal for council rules of procedure to enable hybrid meetings.
I heard a second. Okay, customer ready? Say goodbye, customer Halloween?
Or give it even. I got a problem.
Okay.
Darn right.
Returning it to F and A. And then you have mentioned rules and procedures, but what do we do with rules and procedures at the next F and A meeting?
Uh, I was moving to return it to F and A and ask that they come forward at the next council meeting with any recommendations regarding changes to council rules of procedure necessary to implement hybrid meetings.
For the F and A to do that?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. So the motions are second. You for the discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed name? All right. It passes and we will refer this back to F and A for the discussion. Great, thank you. So the next item then is moving on to committee of the hall. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash fifty-one Lodging Tax Advisory Committee twenty-two twenty twenty-two recommendations. As from this day, as Chair of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, would you please read the summary and motion?
Lodging Tax Fund Advisory Committee, LTAC, is responsible for requesting, receiving and evaluating applications requesting funds for tourism-related programs in Snookoalme. Determining eligibility of the applicants and providing a recommendation of hotel motel tax allocations to the city council. According to R C W sixty-seven dot twenty-eight dot eighteen sixteen. Section two parentheses B parentheses lowercase i i. The municipality may choose only recipients from the list of candidates and recommended amounts provided by the local lodging tax advisory committee. Move to approve Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendation for two thousand and twenty-two funding allocations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Hey, there's a motion by customer to say, say goodbye, customer Halloween. Um, let's, yeah, let's move to public comment. Is there any public comment on this side? Seeing none? We'll go to the chair. Comes from this A.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, LTAC this year had had a maybe a bit of a unique challenge in the allocations in that funding requested of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, I'm rounding off. However, we only know of revenues thus far, just barely over a hundred thousand. And so it was recommended that we try to target the hundred thousand. That ultimately meant that everyone involved of the applicants had to had to have some consideration of what's where's the priorities and and with the committee, I think the committee did a really good job of assessing where where the funds can be and which items potentially have future funding should we have additional revenues, especially considering that throughout the year, will the staff will assess those funds coming in and the revenues that are received and that potentially could increase the amount available. You'll see a couple of items. Two two applicants were to are now receiving no funding for this at this time. But we do, because of the anticipation that there will be additional funding, where the committee was very hopeful that the Metta Farm Preservation Group will get will be able to receive funding before the end of the year. And then the Snookoalme Valley Museum, the chamber actually pushed forward that they felt that they had funding available to to take care of what they're looking for and possibly could take care of that. So they were they were also determined not to have any funding offered. The rest was really, as you can see, they're really an exercise in priorities and trying to make sure we could still do the things that everybody looks forward to. And while, you know, the summer in Snookoalme and Snookoalme Winter Lights and and the events website and the Northwest Railroad Museum marketing all received less than the funding requested, if there were really good discussions on where that funding could come from, other other resources, other jurisdictions and other applications were being made in other places. So all in all, the the LTAC, I think you did a really good job of coming up with a balanced way of allocating the funds that are available right now. And everyone is hopeful that as things improve throughout the year, the estimate on funding available will increase. And then we can can backfill the items that were that weren't able to be funded at this time. So it is recommended by the LTAC committee and and to approve.
Thank you. Counselor Benson?
Yeah, I was curious. There were, it looks like everything took a cut for the most part, but there were three items where there was no where the funding requested was fully funded. And I was wondering if you wouldn't mind articulating how that decision was made with those three items.
Yeah, it was really, it was what was priority to make sure that they had the the full funds. The Snookoalme Valley Chambers mobile app development is something that's brand new. It's something that that the big portion of that allocation is about hosting. And so there was really no way to 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 take a take a bite out of it without essentially, you know, you've got to pay the pay the price. So that was one of the ones there. The Northwest Railroad Museum, the train shed, the funding for that one will allow the facility to be open six days a week. So for for what is really not a large ask, that's an extra day a week that that during the season that the Northwest Railway Museum can be open and operating and and then earning revenue that they can use then to pay for the things that they need to pay for. So that was that was a reason for that one. And then last way, on Snookoalme days, there that's something we'll discuss in the next topic. This is why I wanted to bring it up, is that there is a decline in what is being what we're headed on railroad days. It's being rebranded as Snookoalme days. And I just, there's they lost some some things there that that didn't need as much funding. But the five thousand was really about marketing and making sure that they could get as many people as they possibly could in attendance. So.
Any other comments? Right. Because maybe you're pressing me here.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the committee chair, Lusay, and and that committee. This is bringing this this item in past years has kind of got sometimes had to spend time at committee. One of the requests was, hey, let's cut down on how much time we're taking of staff. Let's streamline the process wherever we can. And so I think under his leadership, this moved just straight to council because, of course, they can't do anything in committee other than send it forward to us anyway. So I think let's get things that are full council things straight to council and let's deal with it. I think this was just exactly the kind of thing we all need to keep watching for and do as much as we can of to reduce the burden on staff. So thank you, Chair Lusay.
No, it's it's no trouble at all. I mean, it was when you're sitting in a Zoom meeting and everyone on the screen has a frown. It it's really hard to to find those those diamonds in the rough. But ultimately, at the end, all of the LTAC committee members agreed in in where we were headed and what we were doing and and how it was going to be done. So it just you know, it's one of those that's just, you know, we want to give the funds to everyone and for every reason. And and it just wasn't there this year. So.
Seems to be higher than it was last year. Which is good. Done the right, done the right way. Counselor Halloween?
So I'm trusting the process, but I really have to question, what is this mobile app going to get us above and beyond what the website does? Uh, it there are times with when you have niche applications like this that you really have to question the return on the investment for an application like this versus just a website out there with the same information.
Comfort is saying?
Yeah, if you want me to follow up, that's a good question, Councilor Holloway. Ultimately, what that was a discussion and with the events website, what we pulled back from that was some of the hosting things that the mobile app needed to keep. The mobile, the website is not geared towards that website applications. It doesn't allow them to do some of the more higher level, more modern based activities on on in a mobile application. And so that was really geared towards making sure that they still have the ability to do to go mobile. I they want to be able to encourage folks who are are visiting Snookoalme and have only their mobile phone and want to say, hey, I've got a little time left over from going here and going there. I'm here for the falls. What can I go see in Snookoalme and be able to to see that effectively and have those things available? So the chamber was really focused on that and that and was really felt that for a for a small ass, they can get a lot out of it.
That's our one. Thank you.
Let me let me help fill out a couple of things. The the mobile app is is to be tied to the kiosk program that the chamber has been working on for some time and and they'll have a couple of these kiosks around. One of them is going to be at the gift shop at Salish Lodge. But the mobile app is is intended to help drive businesses or drive business to restaurants in the area and keep people longer here in the area. So you know, it's a small, small ass and hopefully a big bang for the investment.
Thank you.
I hope that.
Yeah, I I I didn't write that part down about the kiosk and I should have. And I thanks for bringing that up. That was the missing link there.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Great, seeing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? Right, it passes. Lodging tax funding passes. So thank you. Next item is twenty twenty-two railroad days as added by customer saying.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So during the course of the conversation with LTAC and and I and other conversations, it's I don't know if council members are all aware, but it's come to attention, at least to my attention, that railroad days as it exists previously is not what's going to happen this year. Previously, railroad days has been a two-day event in Snookoalme. And you included the closing of Railroad Avenue and and a number of activities. I've been I've been now told and I want to get some clarity from from the city administration, the mayor and others on what what's actually being planned and what's where where things are headed because it's come across, it's come to me that we're only going to be allowed to close Railroad Railroad Avenue for one day. We've lost the car show. There are several vendors that have now said they're not going to be going because they can't support a one-day event. They need two days to make it worthwhile for them. And I just want to get an understanding of what's what's going on there. So if I can get that's that's the reason for bringing this up.
I think our three lays on maybe Nicole, we be is on.
Mayor, hello. Would you like me to brief everyone, Mayor?
That'd be great.
Okay, um, this was a discussion that that we had at the city after reviewing the event for the last several years and conducting surveys with businesses and participants and hearing from many of the businesses that having the road closed from Friday to Sunday was detrimental to their sales. That the road closure was it was just, it was really difficult for them on an August weekend, their busy season during during the tourist season. It was it was a challenge. So I've been watching it for the last couple of years looking at different things and hearing from different participants. So we 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 met with the group, we met with Richard and his staff and really thoughtfully tried to have a discussion or had a discussion and trying to offer some different solutions besides doing a hard road closure. All of those days, we looked at different routes. And the determination was that we would just allow one road closure on on Saturday. I I do need to add that looking around the region, there are not that many two and three-day festivals any longer. Things have been condensed into one-day festivals. I do believe that this is a good direction for them. This group has also it's been financially difficult for them to make a go of it with this event. And so I think to to do everything in one day versus two might help help that those expenses that they have. I I have talked with several people and I think that there's often two sides to every story for all of the people that are upset about it. There's other people that feel that this is a good direction and that it's it's a good decision that makes sense. So we are working with them. This week, we're This week, we're looking at, they want to bring a 5K race in on Sunday. We wouldn't have any road closures for that, but there will be some activities that will be happening on Sunday. And ultimately, a lot of what we heard was the car show, the car show, the car show. And it just kind of was a little befuddling that we were making all of these road closures and doing this for a car show that we weren't really sure if that was quite the demographic that would be coming to Snoqualmie and to Railroad Days. So it was not an easy decision, but we do feel that we were able to back it up with some information and conversation that we had had. But there are people that aren't, there are some that are not happy with this decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Councilor Watten?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would sure, in some of the sentiments that Councilmember Lusay has raised and and not trying to put words in his mouth, but I I think that we have to be particularly sensitive to the fact that the Railway Museum drives a lot of business to the valley and that this has been just an annual event that has helped support them. And I realize that there are some of the shopkeepers, the retailers, that are not exactly on board with it. The car show, to my understanding, brings in a lot of traffic as well. And I know that that was a concern raised to me by Richard as well. It just seems to me that maybe there's a more measured approach that we can take and that I'm I'm not certain that that by taking it from a three-day event to a one-day event really achieves things that is beneficial to everyone. And I think there's, it's gone from kind of one extreme to the other extreme and there's some middle ground that perhaps we should find. And I I think the other thing too is if an event has always carried on in this one for a number of years, especially with COVID and and trying to bounce back, that we need to be sensitive to keeping our traditions going. And so anyway, that's that's kind of my thought there. Thank you.
Nicole?
Yes, I would like to clarify the event. Has it been three days? It's been Saturday and Sunday, but they closed the road on Friday night to to set up and do some and do some things. So it's been a two-day event taken down to a one-day event.
Yeah, I would say, so last year I had a booth. So you set up Friday night and I and then you're you're allowed to take it down like through your 4:00 PM Sunday. So I was there during the whole car show. And so there's people arrive very early and then they leave very early and there was not booth, booth traffic is very low. And I would state that there's a lot of stores that did not have very much activity that whole day. So, so I think part of the issue is, you know, people are just not the people coming to the car show are there for the car show. They're not there, they're not there to go at lunch or anything else. They're just coming in and they're leaving. Your person may you?
Yeah, I am. So I I I completely agree with the comment that this is this is a many decades old tradition for our city. And from what I understand, this will be the last one. There's a commitment to doing this one-day thing, but it will not happen again. They will not they will not endeavor to do this in one day. So this is the end of Railroad Days. This is the last one. And I think a decision like that is a major policy decision for our city. I don't understand why that wouldn't be a decision made by the city council. I I didn't know the information that I just heard. I didn't know that businesses suffered through through this. I'm just sort of trying to take that in. I believe the exact opposite. I thought it brought in a whole bunch of business. So clearly, I need to be educated on this, but I'm I'm very reluctant, especially coming out of COVID. Well, I guess if we're harming the business, I I just, I'd really like to know more about this so that I can get behind this. And I'd really like to see us ask for input from the community. I I just think this is a heck of a step to take to just end Railroad Days without sort of a broader discussion in the community. So my own view is I would rather see us continue this this year. And then, you know, let's have a broader discussion in the community if we're not going to go forward with it. But this is for many a beloved tradition. Something you only get in small towns like ours. You don't get this in cities like Seattle or Bellevue. So I I'd rather see us continue with this at this point, although I'm very interested in being further educated.
You know, I think the only thing that's happened is we're not closing the road Friday night and Sunday. That's all. And so we gave them all, there's lots of options where they can have, where they can put the different booths. And we threw that out and we're trying to help them with that. They could have them there for Sunday. And then we also talked about different places where you can have the car show. And so, you know, it's up to them that they decided not to have the car show, but we gave them, there's lots of options you can have it. You know, you can, you can, if it's called Snoqualmie Days, you can have it up at Center Street, for instance. Or you can have Mount Sinai High School. Or there's some other streets that could be closed. It's not on Main 202 and and it's not where merchants are. So the only change here is they were not closing the road Friday night and Sunday and we gave them lots of options and discussion about what else could be done. We're not, it's not a policy change. They can have it two whole days. We just, we're not just closing the road on Sunday. Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, I was just wondering the same thing, if if the proposal been made, maybe just to close down, say, Falls Avenue between Carmichael's and and Bada. Hey, guys, may I take Slinky outside for a second?
The angry public speaks.
Our dog just, we just found out our dog has alopecia and it's it's a real problem. She's but anyway, I, that that was, that was the suggestion I was going to make and now I'm going to mute.
Councilor Stain?
I'm not going to go after Councilman Stain on that one. I'll let him have his moment. The, I I, you know, I, for me, you know, 22-year resident of Snoqualmie, knowing you know, third and fourth generation Snoqualmie residents saying, you know, they don't know the difference right now. They don't know that this is happening. They don't know that there's a you know, that there's a movement that the Railroad, the Northwest Railroad Museum and the folks involved in that will not come, not do this again. I I think as a city, we need to definitely take what Councilman Mayhew said to heart and and really assess that. You know, if those that have ran ran this event for the last 83 years, are we now saying after that amount of time, they don't know the best method to do this? I I certainly, I certainly struggle with the idea that that businesses are losing money when thousands of people come to Snoqualmie. I I don't know where, I I have a hard time comprehending that. That, you know, we, everything we do as a council seems to be talking about, how do we get more and more people to come to Snoqualmie? Yet, we now are going to have an event that potentially would have less people coming to Snoqualmie and potentially in the future have no one coming to Snoqualmie for this event. I I think Railroad Days is synonymous with Snoqualmie and I really struggle with the idea that it's not going to be continued as it has in the past.
I'm curious, who said that they're not having it next year?
I heard that from Richard directly, that they will not sponsor it next year.
I think in the past, the city ran it and then and turned it over to to Railroad. Um, Councilor Mayhew?
I think Holloway was from.
Councilor Hallway?
Well, I was going to mention, there have been multiple organizations who have run that. We had at one time, it was trying to be a dog focus, if I can segue from the past council member. On, and we at that stage actually kind of begged Railroad to pick it back up. But it 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 has been through several different organizations supporting this over the years. So this is not the long-term family business that we're talking about. This is just an event that we have nurtured along for some time. And guys, I'm down there sometimes on Sunday because my church is there and Sunday afternoon is pretty light.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just really trying to take all this in quickly, but I'm really intrigued by your comments that there are some other ideas of of ways to do this. So, you know, maybe as I, if I'm understanding what I'm hearing correctly, the idea is, hey, we'll we'll close down railroad for one day, but not two days. And so in a sense, maybe that's maybe I'm not taking this in right, but maybe that's a sort of compromise idea that, you know, we're not going to zero, but we're going to go to one day. But then the idea was, hey, we can make, maybe we'll close down other streets or we'll try to make something else work. I wonder can we, especially if that's true that where we seem to be right now is heading towards, this, you know, if anything's going to happen in the future, it'd have to be done by the city. Can we, as the city, just get more involved now and try to find a way for one of those alternatives to actually happen so that we kind of help show how a Railroad Days of the nature that I I think you and or or Ms. Weeby was describing that we can make sort of get more involved to help that actually happen. Because I really would hate to see this sort of go the way of, hey, it's it's not Railroad Days and people are kind of walking away and I'd hate to see that. And and I guess my sense is, it seems that that's where we may be at right now. And so is there a way to to kind of redirect this for a better outcome?
Yes, Councilor Hallway?
So being the council representative for Railroad Days, having been to one meeting, missed one due to schedule conflicts, but I don't see a lack of engagement from the city. Okay, I I think this is a moment in negotiation and we're all being leveraged as part of that negotiation. We probably need to let staff and mayor do their engagement and see what solutions are possible and then come back and talk to us.
Right. Thank you. The city is very engaged in it. Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, Mayor, that, is that something you could? If if that's the case, if these are ongoing discussions, you're trying to sort of get us to, it sounds like there's kind of a an idea or vision that that the city has here. If if that indeed is, maybe you just verify, yeah, those are ongoing. If if that's ongoing discussions, then maybe we could just ask you to continue that and but please maybe report back to us on how that's going.
We will?
And and that is correct? That's just an ongoing, we're sort of in this ongoing discussion right now?
Right, there's regular meetings and our community liaison has been very involved involved with that. And, and we, Jason Rogers is our community development, interim community development director has been involved.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilor Stain?
Yeah, I think, I think, Mayor, I yes, please, just keep us informed. I I, this wouldn't be the first time that you know, negotiating tactics through council members has ever happened. Obviously, this is something that can happen very easily. So I will, I would very much like to just, you know, step out of that conversation. I don't, I don't want to be a part of it. I don't want, I trust you. You and your staff can can handle that. I I just wanted to bring up the the information that I was being relayed through and I, you know, I have, I have a belief that Railroad Days is a great event and and look forward to going to it for many years. And I'm sure that that you're 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 more than capable of taking that forward. So thank you for the efforts you've done so far.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments? So thank you for your input. We will, you know, we will give you an update at the next I'm unsure in the next minute. So maybe later this month or in May. Right, now we move on to the mayor's report. So council, you requested department reports. And our goal is to start providing these reports beginning, like the first council meeting of each month. And the council agenda will include a link to the city website where you'll find the document with each of the reports and also on individual department pages. So the goal is provide a department overview, updating current projects, departmental metrics, departmental metrics and more. And we anticipate the first reports should be available May 9. Moving on, Snoqualmie Valley Government Association Transportation, Mayor's Committee that I sit on, will be meeting with King County Councilman Perry and also King County Metro General Manager Tom White in the next couple of weeks to discuss transit needs within the valley and transit needs for each of our cities, including Snoqualmie. Mayor President Mayhew, do you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say, Mayor, thank you for that information on the the department reports that we'll be getting. And and that just sounds fantastic. I was going to encourage you that I I think sort of in pre-COVID days, when there there was department reporting, I I felt that there was a lot of sort of repetitive information where people, you know, and and I would just say from my own point of view, that's not necessary. It doesn't need to be a big report. It just needs to be a meaningful report. And if that's brief, all the better. It just lets us as councilmembers focus in on the main points and the main metrics and in in the main projects, you know, whatever it is that is relevant to that department. So I I would just say, I I would encourage you to to have them, you you know, not feel like they have to produce a lot of volume, just, you know, give us what matters.
Right. So our first trial will be for May 9. So the reports will evolve as we as we move through this. And also there's our communications manager the communications department is actually working on updating the website. So there will be more more information and easier access and stuff in the near future for those reports as well. So King County Councilmember Sarah Perry will be hosting a Snoqualmie Town Hall on Thursday, April 21st, starting at 6:30 PM at the New and Compass Northwest location. I met recently with our legislators' representatives, Callan and Ramos, Senator Mullins, and with redistricting of our other valley cities. I've also met with Representatives Steele and Gainer. And topics included thanking them for support on Move Ahead Washington for funding to widen Seurat 18 and also Parkway repaving. And then we discussed some of the issues such as police reform and issues that are resulting of the ongoing Blake decision, the need for transit Snoqualmie throughout the valley and need for more housing, whether it's affordable or the missing metal, but just more housing in general. Yeah, we have a special workshop that was canceled today due to council member's schedules. And so we will be rescheduling that for April 25th. Purposes will be the squad analysis results and council discussion establishing the council priorities for the upcoming biennial. So that's in my report. The next regular council meeting is April 25th. So no, so you know, for the business to come for council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second?
All right. This was by Mayor President Mayhew and a second by Councilwoman Watten to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, is the I?
I, I.
Any opposed name? All right. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight and have a good night. Thanks.